The meeting to order, please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thanks for coming, everybody. We had a heat wave today, it was nice, we almost got up to normal temperatures. Roll call, please.
Matt Bouchard.
Captain.
Joanne Shurkey.
Here.
Cindy Valentine here. Artie Bryson.
Here.
Kristy Hilton here. Crystal Riga.
Here.
Sandy Kupko.
Here.
Alright, moving right along, we have bills payable, entertaining motion.
I'll make a motion for bills payable in the amount of one hundred and forty-one thousand, five hundred and three dollars and twenty-five cents.
Support. Good motion, support. Any questions or anything? Hearing none, roll call.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Crystal Riga?
Yes.
Sandy Kupko?
Yes.
Joanne Shurkey?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next, we have our supervisors' report, try to be brief. As I always do, I start out with high water, I'm talking about that, and we still are, actually, it went down last four day, four or five days. We're about seven inches higher than we were this time last year, which is kind of alarming. I was hoping more, for more of a drop in the levels here the past month or so, but has not, have not seen it yet, hopefully we'll get that in next, you know, going forward in next month. I was told that our August, the county's August 12th request for emergency relief due to high water was denied by the governors. It was, I was told that it was based on, the denial was based on the state police emergency management and homeland security office. I contacted them and they kind of said, well, you know, don't blame us, we wanted you to get it. So anyhow, going forward, it's a political thing. Going for, for, I'm trying to be as proactive as I can because the past three, four weeks, I mean, Army Corps of Engineers been on the news and everywhere else saying, you know, it more than likely will be higher next year than this past year. They can't say for sure, but the alarming thing is, you know, we're seven, eight inches higher than we were this time last year. So it doesn't take rocket science to say if we have the same winter and spring, we're going to be seven, eight inches higher next year, which would put a lot of people underwater, so. Again, we're trying to prepare for the worst and pray for the best. I've been talking to some na, people and I urge everybody to get with their neighbors and if there's some kind of a plan, like I talked to some people down Pearl Beach Boulevard, they get water from the back, from the marsh. If you can get, now's the time to do it, five, six, eight people in a row together to put a berm along the back, it's a lot easier to do it now. You know, the contractors are more readily available and it's easier to get equipment in and out. If you wait till the spring, you know, the ground's saturated, it's a lot harder. So I urge people to get with their neighbors and if they can come up with some sort of plan to protect their property. So I, I was shooting a lot of emails today and talking to a lot of people at the state level and the Michigan DNR. The, the main re, or, and primarily today was about, about a no wake. And if it get, goes higher for next year in the rivers, and I'm a boater, last thing I want, I definitely don't want a permanent no wake, but if it gets to the, to the point where people's property is being destroyed, you know, we gotta look at something. The governor, the head of the Michigan DNR enforcement said, we don't, the DNR does not have the juice to do a temporary no wake. The only person or entity that can do that is from the governor's office by way of an executive order. So I was talking and, and she's really not, wasn't interested in doing that. But I, I just want to keep, have an option in case it does get worse, I don't want to wait till it happens and then it's too late. We're looking legislatively, I've talked to a few people in Lansing about doing a Michigan DNR emergency authority panel. And that can, that, that, that would ultimately be able to do that for a short term. And I was talking to a few people, I mean, that, you know, be careful what you wish for because the DNR can, let's face it, I even told them to them on the phone today, they can go rogue too. So we gotta have some oversight over this authority and we're, we're just kind of spitballing today, maybe do something where they recommend it to a committee that would be of legislatures and citizens, and that they would do final approval and it had to be renewed every thirty days to see how it's working. Something, something along there, but there, there is talks and we're spearheading it of doing something along those lines. Because I know what happens if come June when all the boats are running and Artie, what are you doing? Well, it's too late to do anything now, so we're working on it now. I'll keep you guys up, posted as it, it goes on that, or as it goes forward and, and what, what we can do to help us out. But, you know, again, you know, there, there's, we've talked about advanced measures. How can we keep, you know, the water off of the Dyke Road if it gets high and other roads and, and other areas? I mean, there are specific areas in the township where we could do a little berming and block certain culverts off and pump out large sections of, of property to help a lot of people out. So I'm going to be working on that going forward too. That's a good segue, FEMA, as you might know, they, they're looking at redoing the floodplain maps. And I talked to them quite a bit over the past three or four years, in fact, there's a sample on the back wall of what they're recommending. And the map was actually taking about twelve hundred structures out of the floodplain in the township, putting about five or six structures into their new zone, the velocity zone from wind. But it also is going to have about a twenty, twenty-five percent rate increase on new customers. But if you already have flood, flood insurance, I mean, I hate, it's one of my biggest pet peeves, but if you have it, your rates will be grandfathered in, so if you do have it, if you're required to have it, and you don't want to let it lapse because if you do, the rates will go up significantly. And an important thing too, if you do have it and someone, if you sell your property to somebody else, they'll allow that to be transferred to the new owners. So I'm not sure if real estate people know that or not, but if, I'll let them, let them know. The wire department, you know, we got that cold snap and I want to give them kudos, they really busted their rear ends getting all our fire hydrants winterized before we got hit last week by our, this early frost. And I don't know if you saw it or not, but OHM along with Red Zone has been doing a lot of their work on the sewer interceptor along M-29. They actually started it last week Monday during the blizzard that we had and they're, hopefully, going to wrap it up the end of this week, their field work. Then they got to interpret all the, all the data that they found and then report back to us. Also did meet with Elgnac, IRA, ourselves and the county about our wastewater treatment plant system and about getting together a fifty-year agreement that, because right now what we have is very loosely defined and a lot of loose ends. And we were all in pretty much agreement on what we want to see in it and everything, so we're, we're working on putting something together with that going forward. And then November thirteenth, actually, we got a, a violation letter from, I still call them the DNR eagle, that the plant was running above capacity. And Clay Township was written up for the second, for second and third quarters of last year. Elgnac was actually written up for six quarters past year and a half. And we already did take actions to correct that situation going forward. As the board knows, we bolted down a lot of manholes and replaced the gaskets. We're really going into different areas where there was infiltration, where people were dumping illegally and into the sewer system. And we, we actually already have done the corrective actions that they, they wanted from us and we just have to send a report in on that. Been seeking guard, or quotes for our new garbage pickup, I've put bid packets together to GFL, Waste Management, Jeff Garbage Republic Trash Removal, and also with the current one, M-Tera. Jeff Garbage Removal declined to bid, they're just, they're out of Yale and they said, yeah, we can't do it. I, I am talking with the other companies and getting information on, on, see what kind of deal they can give us and what kind of service they can give us for our trash removal. And typically, they're at least a five-year deal because, you know, for a new company to come in, they gotta do a significant outlay of, with equipment and, and stuff, so, you know, they, if it's less than five years, typically, it's hard to get anyone to bid because they gotta spread their overhead out. So I just want to let the board know that. Working with Comcast to get, we have about three or four roads where we don't have broadband. Mile Road, parts of, or Starville, parts of Sword Out and a few other areas. I'm looking to get a price from Comcast to extend broadband to all those roads and maybe do some sort of a special assessment or something to defer the costs over ten years or however long. Sherry's rolling her eyes right now. And, and get broadband to these homes and how we can do it, you know, that makes sense. I don't know if that will happen or not, but I always get asked, you know, what can we do to get broadband and, and, because they told me it's going to be ten grand to run it to my house and, and so. As, I don't know if it'll work or not, but we're going to try it. Also working on, as I mentioned last meeting, with DTE to get our streetlights converted over to LED. I did sign the paperwork to get a couple more streetlights added, specifically M-29 and Island Drive. We've been trying to do that for quite some time and I see there's a new poll there for it, so hopefully in the next week or two, we'll have a, a streetlight there. Okay, that's on the agenda, working on the bonds for murders. Planning Commission had a town hall meeting for their master plan, the first one, November thirteenth, they had on the island and, and then over here. And there was, they were happy with the turnout and where people could come and, and ask questions and, and seek out information. I attended both of them, I'm not sure how many people, I'm not sure what we ended up with, but they were happy with the attendance. And see, I want to thank the Pearl Beach Lions for decorating the park. They do have Pearl Beach Lions Christmas in the Park Saturday, December seventh. If it rains, not snow, but rain, we're doing it December eighth. Starts at three PM, choir at four PM, the, the Elgnac School Choir sings. And I hear Santa's supposed to arrive around four. And they have sleigh rides, free hot chocolate, hot dogs, tree lighting at five, all next door, so. And then we all, we have lots of Parks and Rec stuff going on. If you're on Facebook, like us on there and on Clay Township Parks and Rec, and it's all, all posted there. Or you can give Cindy Babish a call in the building department or anybody here, we got all kinds of this stuff all over in the library with information. Okay, so that's the supervisors' report. Next, we have public comments, do we have any public comments? Come on up and state your name and you can go first.
Well, I'll go first, I got a handout for you guys.
Thank you.
Dale Bryant, ninety-two thirty-one Maple. So I'm here to talk about the, I'll call it the, kind of the Snybor corridor of our waste management issues. And I was kind of going over some things here, and on the first page you'll see, that was the letter that got sent out originally on August twentieth. It was, I don't know when it was actually received, August twentieth, that was sent out, that's a special assessment, was going away and our dumpsters are going away at Deckers. And then after that, I guess there was a meeting that some people, I don't, I was a little confused, I thought they were at the meeting, but they must have made contact with you guys prior to the meeting, is that correct? Because I looked over the meeting minutes and I didn't see it really discussed by the board. So one of the questions I had was how that was decided to turn it kind of back on, I wasn't sure, it didn't seem like the board voted on it or how was that?
Yeah, we did, we passed a resolution.
Oh, was there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's what I, I couldn't, didn't see it in the minutes. Was that the, is it resolution twenty nineteen dash twenty B or something, does that sound?
I have no idea what the number is, I could look it up.
Well, it just said, and here it says, motion by you, curbside garbage refuse and recycling collection, twenty nineteen special assessment levy.
Probably, yeah.
Was that it? Oh, okay. Funny how that went back on, I guess one of the things, did you guys, did anybody ever communicate that, that was able to be used? We got the letter that said it couldn't be used and was it, was, I mean, I heard about it based on being around here, but I don't know if any of the other property owners are aware that they can use it now.
Nothing's changed, so yeah. I mean, we didn't send another letter out, no, but.
I think another, well, how would they know, I guess what I'm saying, they wouldn't know that they can't use it.
Like I told you, we're going to send another letter out with a ballot.
Oh, that's when you're going to?
Yeah. I'm not, I don't, I'm not going to send four letters out.
Okay, you're going to, okay.
We're going to do it one time.
Everybody knew they could use it, they're paying for it. Okay. Then I went, you had sent me the letter, the second page there, you had sent me the contract for M-Tera, and I appreciate you getting that to me so quickly. And kind of looking over that, I was, I was a little bit confused at how it was, that the out islands are charged nine thirty-eight. And if you go through the contract, it really, it says nothing about dumpsters. So the nine thirty-eight is what we're paying M-Tera, nine thirty-eight per household in the flats.
For the whole township.
Right.
For non-recycle.
But the flats aren't getting the same service, I mean, and if you go through the contract, I highlighted a few things, and they talk about stops, you know, they charge per stop. So I'm not sure why we had in the contract that we would count those as stops when they're only providing dumpsters. It just seems like they're being overpaid, I mean, wouldn't we take that out and say, these are not stops, we're paying X number of dollars for the dumpsters?
Well, that's what we're going to negotiate going forward, it's up for bid, as I, I said.
Okay, so is, I mean, is that how?
This is the contract, it's, it's been like this for, for years.
Right, so I guess that's the question, is that, that piece of it looks like it's going to be changed then?
I don't know yet, depends on what we come out to, after negotiations.
Because I did, just, I called M-Tera, talked to a fellow there, and got some quick numbers, what do they do with them, on, on some dumpsters. And what he did is, he, he just gave me a letter, it was from Corey Garmin of M-Tera. And the dumpsters, if we wanted to have dumpsters at Deckers, and I think there was about a hundred and ten people in the Sny corridor there, if we wanted to have dumpsters there, it would be about, I think there's two six yard and an eight yard there right now, but he gave me a quote for three eight yards, it'd be three hundred, about three hundred and five dollars a month. And if you divvy that up between, you know, the Sny corridor, that's only like thirty-three, thirty-four bucks per year, per household. So with that being said, it seems, would be more advantageous for, you know, the property owners there that aren't getting the same services as the mainland to, you know, do something of that nature. I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be opposed.
It could be, but like I told you in my email too, there's other costs other than just M-Tera.
I, I understand that, but I didn't, I didn't have the breakdown of that, but I guess what I would like, what would be nice is if we had, we could either do a special assessment out there. While the M-Tera, the cost, the dumpster cost of three hundred and five, that actually does include everything, that's an all-in, there's no cubic ton or tonnage charge or anything like that. It's just the dumpsters are three hundred and five dollars.
Okay, if you say so, basically, I don't know who you talk to.
Yeah, but they're looking at it as a separate type of business, right? I mean, they're looking at that as a separate, take it right out of the books for the Sny corridor or whoever else wants.
So can get to the point, you're well above, above three minutes.
Well, I just want to explain, you know, kind of where we're going here, is what I'd like to see is that either we do a special assessment district out there, but.
That's what it is now.
Yeah, just, just for that piece of it?
Yeah.
I don't recall, wouldn't a special assessment district require us to all vote on garbage pickup if that is just, it's alone?
No, it is renewed every year, it was voted out once, gets renewed every year, the special assessment.
How is that renewed?
The board votes on it.
Okay. So that was originally, the whole township did the special assessment, that included, I guess what I was saying, what I would personally like to see out there, and I know some of the other folks, to get the, the prices down to where they should be, is a special assessment district, you know, for the, like the Sny corridor, the flats, so we would just pay for the dumpster. We would opt out of the, the garbage or the, where we drop off the branches and those kind of things. I mean, the likelihood of anybody coming from the flats bringing their trees with them is, is pretty close to zero, you know, obviously they could. And also, I talked to them about possibly pulling some dumpsters to reduce our costs even further if they wanted to only service like one dumpster in the wintertime, pick the months, you know, December through March or something, and that could reduce costs over there as well. So, so I was hoping all this could be, you know, looked at and with, with the new contract coming out, that's, that's why I wanted to be here and make sure, you know, we were heard out in the Sny.
You can have it.
All right?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Diane Miller, seventy-three eleven B Lane. I've got a couple of things that, the garbage pickup, I've had a lot of issues and made many phone calls to M-Tera. I bought a brand-new garbage can and it went out to the street three times before they had it broken. It wasn't even dirty on the inside yet and it was broken. And when I called them, they were like, they don't care, you talk to the guys that are driving down the street, you, you yell and holler at them, hey, quit throwing the garbage cans around, you're breaking them, they, we're not allowed to talk to you. And anyway, it needs to be known that they are abusing the garbage cans when they're brand-new like that, it's terrible. But I just brought that up because it was the new contract coming up. One of the, one of the things that I'd like to try and see if we can get something going is mainland and islanders and events. The Scarecrow Festival ended up being on the same day as the island had their Halloween thing. That, that wasn't real good, it kind of divided our township again and it would be nice if.
Yeah, like, the years before, they always did it on the island the week before. And we, or two weeks before Halloween, we always did it the weekend before the Halloween. Why they changed it, I don't know. Just like December seventh, they're doing a winter fest over on the island, they just announced it a week and a half ago. Same time that we're doing the tree lighting here.
It's, it's frustrating that events are going on at both.
Well, it's hard because it taxes us double, we gotta be at both.
Yeah, and, and it, and it doesn't help. It doesn't help with the controversies and the bickering between island and mainlanders that.
There's no bickering here.
It's frustrating. And then another, another thing that, and, and I don't know who does these events on the island, but like, sometimes you have to buy tickets in advance. And for one, one that I was, I was planning on attending on the island was the barbecue. And someone had posted that tickets will be available at the event, so I said, okay, great. So I don't have to spend ten dollars to go across the island to get tickets. Well, then, two or three days before the event, they were sold out, no tickets were available at the door anymore. And, and I'm just wondering whether, can we get tickets available on both? I mean, can they bring tickets here so that mainlanders have an opportunity?
I can request it at the township hall or something. I assume these are like a Harson's Island Homeware Association events.
I don't know what they are, but they sound, they sound like fun events that, and they're a part of our township that, you know, there's a lot of people that might like to attend and we're kind of in a pickle, you know? Like I said, the barbecue was one that I was looking forward to attending and getting over on the island that I haven't been on in years. And anyway, that's one thing. Yeah, if we can get someplace here locally, when they have events, if they'd be willing to do it, if this isn't a township event, if it's a Harson's Island group event or whatever, if they could make tickets available somewhere here for us to participate, I think it would be helpful. Also, our video and audio are outrageous.
No, I, they, they are on the planning, but these meetings are not, it's the same system.
Exactly, and I don't know why.
I'm not sure why either.
There's a lot of buzzing and I don't know if it's different people that are running the equipment in the back or whether there's something that people are bringing in that's causing interference.
If there's a lot of cell phones on wifi, it will cause it.
I don't know, there didn't seem to be that many people here at the, at the last meeting that I just viewed earlier today. And it buzzed like crazy and it was absolutely horrible.
And like Cindy too, I think if they, if they have all the mics up, it gets feedback.
Well, it, and.
I'm just, I'm just guessing.
Well, not only that, but just like you just did, if you're leaning back like that away from the mic, then we, you start fading out.
Well, everyone hears me though.
They would me too.
Yeah, okay.
But anyway, I've asked the planning commission several times about, about it also. And the last thing that I have to ask about is what services do we have Giffles and Webster's providing for us?
There are planning consultants.
Okay, because I had thought that that's what they were, but I was corrected and I was told that there are planners. And I don't know what the difference is.
There are, are planning consultants to the planning commission.
Okay, so are they, like, is this a, a monthly fee to support us or are we billed based on projects, hourly? Hourly?
Both, they, they get a retainer, a monthly retainer, plus they, they get paid hourly for doing spe, like, different projects.
For instance, the Blue Horseshoe project would probably be billable hours to us?
Yep.
Okay, I'm, I'm a little bit frustrated with what's going on with that Blue Horseshoe Island right now. And I know that you're not supposed to have anything to do with it, but I don't know where else to go.
Okay.
But we're in the middle of a public hearing, it's been going on for months. And at the last meeting, when again, the developer has not adequately addressed all the concerns of the planning commission, it was decided that Giffles and Webster, the chairperson, and the developer, the applicant, were all going to sit down and meet this afternoon, I understand, to go over forty-some questions that the planning commission had in regards to this development. And at the time when this was being discussed during the public hearing, I said, well, that sounds like you're having a closed meeting. And it didn't make sense to me, why are our planning consultants that consult us, why are we now providing consultation services to the applicant? services to the applicant? To, to give them advice on what they need to provide to us in order for us to consider, um, uh, their application? It just doesn't make any sense to me. And, and, and I don't, I don't know who, I don't know how this works. If you guys don't have anything to do with it, then where do we go when there seems to be some conflicts going on here?
I'll check into it, is, is, I, I would hope, and I will che- check into it, they're only gonna clarify what is being required to the applicant, to the, you know, their, their role would, should be to clarify what the planning, what information that the Planning Commission expects and needs to make a decision. I was hoping, Mark's not here, I wish he was.
Me too.
I was hoping they were gonna give him a drop-dead date. I don't know if they did or not.
No.
I, I, I thought they were going to.
But what, what was this?
Well, Cindy just said our billing department is Wednesday, but, um, so they're gonna, I know they're gonna give him a drop-dead date.
Well, I know that...
And, uh, it's not a closed meeting unless, or it's not a meeting unless the, the, there is a quorum of the Planning Commission there. Like there would have to be, what, five Planning Commission people, because there's nine on the board, for it to be a, a meeting. But if, if, if the chair and the planner and even the billing inspector wants to meet with the applicant, they, they can, but it should be only just to, not to tell them what to do, but to clarify the information that they're requesting.
Well, we've requested, or the Planning Commission has requested several things from them over the last few months.
Right.
And they keep not providing it.
That's why...
And so now, each one of the Planning Commission, Commissioners sat down and they wrote out a whole bunch of questions as to what they wanted the applicant to address at the next public hearing. And to me, we are providing consulting services to them by saying, these are the questions we want you to answer.
Well, the Planning Commission has the right to ask them questions.
And, and, and we have done that, but now they're having a sit-down private meeting.
Right, the Planning Commission has the right to ask them questions and they have the right to answer them. And the Planning Commission and our planners' role should be, like I said before, to explain what the questions are and to clarify them, but not give them the answers. And I'm hoping that's what's being done and I'll, I'll check into that tomorrow.
Well, I mean, that's, that's what they said that they were doing, is that they're, they're trying to get this clarification, but it, it seems to me that we're spending money for our consultants to consult the applicant.
They, how it works...
That's the appearance.
Well, how it works, they, the permit, the, the permitting, or the person going for the permit, they pay our consultant fees. You know, I get a bill, he spent three hours on Blue Horseshoe, so I, I circle up Bloom Echoes on their, their permit fee.
Okay, so Blue Horseshoe has to reimburse us for the cost of our planning consultants. Well, that makes me feel a whole lot better.
Good.
Because I know that there's been a lot of money spent on that project and it's, it's becoming quite frustrating.
Yep.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
All right, thanks. Any more public comments?
No.
No? Check in. Any more public comments? Okay, moving right along, we have the consent agenda. Entertained motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the board meeting minutes of November fourth, two thousand nineteen. Check reports, there were no notices, there's communication from, for the Police Department of thank-you cards, resignation from Anthony Yarich, our Electrical Inspector, Parks and Rec updates. There's also a sympathy card put in here for Artie Bryson. Gold blue, Michigan State lost. And there were no requests.
I'd like to discuss this. Do we have a second?
Support.
Okay, I would like to pull this out. Everybody knows I'm a green, my blood's green and white, and I get this card handed to me right before the, uh, meeting, uh, sorry for your loss. And it has gold blue, forty-four, I didn't even watch the end of the game, truthfully, to ten. But there is basketball and I'm ready for it. Bring on Izzy.
Anything else on the consent agenda?
We have motion and support.
Right. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Put that in there. Okay, under, uh...
Frame it and put it in your office.
Yeah. Under, uh, new business, we have requested the Fire Department purchase five portable suction units. Forty-five hundred dollars, Chief.
Yep, we're asking permission from the board to purchase five new suction units. The ones that we do have, uh, we have five that were purchased, I'm not sure where they got them from, but, uh, they don't make parts for those anymore. Uh, and we have three that are operational ones on the island and we have two on the mainland, so, uh, we need, we would like to replace all of them, uh, so we can staff the island with two and then have, uh, three on the mainland.
These goes, go on the vehicles?
Yes, yeah, it's part of our BLS license.
I'll make a motion that we support Chief's request for the purchase of five portable suction units at a cost of four thousand five hundred dollars and eighty-two cents, coming from line item two oh six dash seven four five.
Support.
Motion to support. Any, uh, comments or anything? Any discussion?
Shelf life?
On these, well, uh, they're probably a good ten years.
Yeah.
And we're compatible with, uh, Tri Hospitals, so if we use one of our units and we need a, a cup or the, uh, the, um, device that holds the fluids, uh, we can get that from Tri.
Okay, any more discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you.
And next, we have, uh, Fire Department, uh, accept a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar donation from Saint John's Marsh, Saint John's Marsh Dental.
You might as well just stay right there.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I put all your stuff together.
Thank you.
Right. I think it was for, didn't we do a CPR class?
We did a CPR class for the office staff there at Saint John's Marsh Dental.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar donation to the Fire Department from Saint John's Marsh Dental.
Support.
Yeah, motion to support, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Next, um, Chief Rose is, uh, bringing forward a new hire, part-time Catherine Lucas. Want to tell us about Catherine?
Yes, I am requesting permission from Township Board to hire, uh, Catherine Lucas. Uh, she is, uh, present, she, she's going to school at Oakland, uh, Community College and she is firefighter one, firefighter two, certified along with a EMT certification in Michigan.
Right. Awesome. Sounds good. Where, Catherine, where do you live?
I live in Washington Township.
Oh, okay, sounds good. Does anybody have any questions for Catherine?
Catherine, how come Clay Township instead of Washington, Shelby, something else?
First of all, Chief, for one, I think he's probably the most professional, respectful Chief I've ever come across. Uh, I think he offers me a lot of opportunities to learn and grow, especially with the aspect of the water training that I could get here.
Good answer.
That's right.
The Fire Department's involved in a lot of community events, are you going to also be available to help with some of those as well?
Absolutely.
Awesome.
Cool.
What are you attending Oakland for right now?
Paramedic and nursing.
And what?
Nursing.
Oh, good for you.
Thank you.
All right, can't remember, do we have a motion?
With that being said, I'll make a motion to, uh, accept the new hire, part-time Catherine Lucas, um, to our Fire Department.
Support.
Yeah, motion to support, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Catherine.
Thank you.
And next we have, uh, new hire, part-time Michael Jeffries.
I'm asking permission from Township Board to hire J. Michael Lawrence Jeffries, who's employed at, uh, Saint John's Maine. Uh, he's a dog handler for the security forces down there. Mr. Jeffries is also firefighter one, fighter two, certified.
It's my bad, I apologize, I left the J on.
Yes, I see it here, I don't see it there. I miss that.
Thursday was a rough day for me when I was putting these together, it was the beginning of my cold, so I apologize.
Now's the end of it.
Now it's the end of my cold, absolutely.
All right. And where do you live?
Roseville.
Roseville, okay, truck on out here?
Yes.
Okay, want to ask your question, Chris?
I, I want to know a little bit more about what you do as a dog handler.
Yeah, I, I do too.
Everybody wants to know about the dog.
Yeah, I'm interested in your role in it.
Been doing it, uh, two years now. Uh, he's an explosive detection dog, he's trained in aggression, build a search, article search, area search. We're not allowed to help out the other surrounding communities, liability reasons, but, uh, anything, any issues that we have in the hospital, any of the Saint John hospitals, uh, if they do have like a bomb threat somewhere, he can go to there and, uh, do what he does.
Yeah. Does the dog stay at the facility or stay with you?
He stays with me. I have another dog that I also am using for, I'm trying to get private detection work for him, so he needs a job instead of tearing up my house.
I have a dog that needs a job too. Stella's on the couch waiting for me, get off the couch.
Oh, that's cute.
All right, that's way cool. Entertained a motion?
I'll make a motion that we hire J. Michael Lawrence Jeffrey, part-time, to the Fire Department.
Support.
Yeah, motion to support, any more discussion or questions?
Mr. Jeffries, what would you prefer to be known as?
You can call me Jay.
Jay, I like that. All right.
Super easy.
I suppose you're a Michigan fan, huh?
He, he was the first one.
Yeah, he signed the card.
He got props.
I, I see it right there.
There's only one vote.
All right. Hearing no more discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Congratulations.
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 Both you two stick around after the meeting, I'll swear you in and give you some paperwork.
All right. Uh, next we have, uh, Board of Review Appointment of David Burley.
Mr. Burley was unable to attend this evening.
Yeah.
But I would make a motion to approve Mr. Dave Burley to our Board of Review.
Support.
Yeah, motion to support, yeah, he comes highly recommended, it's already a member of our Police Department and, uh, is willing to step forward. Are we looking for more people to?
Yeah, one more at least.
Yeah, we are looking for another person on our Board of Review. We may actually have two Board of Reviews this year, so that's what Sherri's plan is. Maybe, no, I don't know.
Probably not.
Probably not. Who knows?
So is this filling a vacancy we already have?
Alternate. All right, uh, any more discussion? Do we have a motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Chris second.
All right, I get ahead of myself. Uh, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. All right, next we have a new hire, part-time Electrical Inspector and our Electrical Plan remove, re, remover. Is everyone tired today?
Yes.
This time, yeah. Reviewer, Greg Furtah. And he comes highly recommended from our Billian Inspector.
I believe he is hiding here.
And he is hiding in the back. And I've known Greg for, I don't want to say for how long, and I also recommend, Greg, why don't you come up here and say hi?
How you doing, Greg? We gotta embarrass you. Yeah, I know.
I'm sorry, we've done you. How long have you, uh, been an Electrical Inspector?
This is my fourth year.
Fourth year, okay, you do it for anyone else?
East China, full-time, and then, um, part-time in Lennox and Columbus.
Okay.
Back up there.
Very good. Anyone have any questions for Greg?
What's your resume like, Greg? What, what'd you do before you were Electrical Inspector?
Uh, electrician.
Were you?
Yep, uh, I worked for a company from ninety-two to oh-two and then started my own company, um, in oh-three.
Residential, commercial, both?
Yep, everything.
Everything?
Mm-hmm.
Gotcha. Were you licensed electrician for that?
Yep. I still have license.
Still licensed?
Mm-hmm.
Awesome. And you think you can handle all the extra work that Clay Township's gonna bring you away?
Yeah.
All right.
Greg does live locally.
East China.
East China.
We won't hold that against you.
Right. Yeah, I'm in Clay every day.
Are you, are you able to start this week?
Yeah, I already talked to Cindy about it.
She told me to.
Charity Corner, John.
Yes.
Okay. Any more questions for Greg? Entertained a motion?
Board, I'll make a motion that we support the new hiring, part-time Electrical Inspector and Plan Reviewer of Mr. Greg Furtah.
Support.
Hearing a motion to support, any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor of, uh, hiring Greg Furtah as our Township Electrical Inspector and Electrical Plan Reviewer, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carried, congratulations.
Welcome aboard.
We'll be talking to you probably tomorrow.
Thanks for coming in.
Okay, uh, next we have Resolution two thousand nineteen twenty-eight before you, we do this, uh, basically every year, uh, to opt out of the eighty-twenty agreement, um, it's Public Act one fifty-two, um, that basically says any government, uh, employee has to pay twenty percent of their health care premium. And, um, we, uh, part of our collective, collective bargaining unit, we agree to opt out of this so they don't have to pay the full twenty percent, but they do share with the costs. And, um, to make it so they, uh, so basically every year we gotta opt out of Public Act one fifty-two.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution two thousand nineteen twenty-eight, the opt-out eighty-twenty agreement.
Support.
Yeah, motion to support, any discussion? Hearing none, oh, roll call.
Sandy Kufa.
Yes.
Crystal Reagan.
Yes.
Kristy Hilton.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Joanne Shurkey.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, uh, we have our health insurance renewal and, as I've reported to the board, we've been working on this for quite some time and Jack, uh, our, our agent, um, couldn't be here tonight, but if the board really wanted to see, to review it with them, he could be here probably our next meeting, but so, well, let's see if we can get it through, um, you know, it's out of him being here. Um, attached is our renewal staying with Blue Cross Blue Shield. And, um, we're estimating that will cost, uh, five hundred and thirty-two thousand, which, um, as the, the board knows, that we, we pay, uh, a higher, our policy has a higher deductible, but it's cheaper for us to have a policy where we pay, have the as the board knows, we pay a higher, our policy has a higher deductible, but it's cheaper for us to have a policy where we have the higher deductible, but we take care of a large portion of the employees deductibles. And it turns out, in the long run, it turns out to save us money. So what we actually pay is a projection of what we think it will be, and every year our actual is a lot lower than our projection. And even with this projection, we're still paying less than we were back in two thousand fifteen, is it?
Fifteen sixteen, yeah.
Yeah, fifteen sixteen, which, that's a heck, I mean not too many people can say that, we're paying less than we were four years ago for health insurance. But we've definitely been thinking out of the box and working hard on this every year, so. Does anyone have any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the Burnham Flowers healthcare Blue Cross Blue Shield renewal effective one-one two thousand twenty.
Support.
Yeah, motion and support, any discussion?
The renewal for five thirty-two?
Yes.
Four forty-three?
Estimated, yes. Any discussions? Like I say, our options were six hundred and thirty thousand, renewal of five hundred and eighty-five.
This is our current, the renewal is five sixty-six oh eight twelve.
Okay.
Projected.
Projected.
Those numbers are a little high, as you can see I wrote in currently enrolled, instead of nine, which they projected, we currently have eight. Six couples, we currently have five, and twenty-three families, we currently have twenty-one. It'll depend on the employee status and who signs up.
Yep.
Who waves. So that's definitely worst-case scenario, the five sixty.
Well, yeah, like I said, we're always on a conservative end on our projections too, so.
Do we have any indication, Cindy or Artie, on the likelihood of Jack negotiating another forty-five K premium reduction for us next year, or can we expect that we might have to absorb that?
Yeah, a lot of it depends on usage, and we had to have everyone fill out a survey with their issues, I think our employees, because HIPAA, they really didn't have to do that. And our usage is low, our group is younger, and he used that to go to bat for us and got that reduction from when originally it was an eighteen percent increase.
Yep.
So, you know, every year we do this, you know, and then a lot of times we end up switching companies. Half wouldn't even quote us anymore this year. And we did get a quote from Priority Health, it's.
Last year we were with half, they wanted to give us a thirty-four percent increase.
Right. And that's what happens, you know, they'll bid you low, get you in there, and then they jack you out. Problem with Priority Health is it's pretty much apples to apples, really, because they do have a lot of backend charges that we'd have to pay, and also a lot of their doctors aren't in their network around here, which is a problem.
It's just amazing, the whole health insurance field and the amount of increase annually that we expect, it far exceeds our cost of living, it far exceeds the cost of wage increases, the cost of college and universities, and, you know, it's spiraling.
Yep.
That it is.
The only issue that, why I was bringing this up is if we don't retain that credit and we expect a ten to fifteen percent increase next year, you know, it could fluctuate this budget by more than a hundred grand. And it's something that we probably want to be aware of in developing, you know.
Next year's budget.
Next year's budget.
Every time we do the budget, I call Jack up, what are we looking at, you know, where's the renewals coming in?
Yeah.
And he gives me a little bit of feedback.
Well, you know, thirty, forty grand, you know, we could probably absorb, suck it up, but we're talking six-figure potential increase, that's notable.
Well, our health insurance is one of our largest expenses township-wide.
I can see why.
Yep.
That being said though, I appreciate the work that you and Cindy are putting into this, you know, giving some options, and, you know, we've got some outstanding health insurance for our employees.
Yep.
And I hope it leads to, you know, increased retention and happy employees throughout our township.
It's a good thing.
People that are, the boots that are hitting the ground. Appreciate you.
Was that a motion?
We have motion and support.
And support, okay. Any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Chris O'Regan?
Yes.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Artie Brison?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes? Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next, as far as the benefits sector, another expense. Everybody knows I've been working on getting our unfunded liability for our pension plan caught up through a bond, which the state now allows us in, kind of, I think they passed the law and they extended it in hopes that a lot of municipalities would do this. Basically, our, and believe me, I can't believe it, they say, oh, you're fine, you know, you're, you're what, sixty-five percent funded, or six, you know, above that, you're, I'm like, really? I just look at the unfunded balance, I'm like, that's a problem to me, but comparatively speaking, we're in good shape. But I'd like to, like I said, we're researching to see if it makes sense for us to get a bond. We can get a bond right now anywhere from two to two and a quarter percent interest. And take that money and give it to MERS, who historically have been making between seven, nine percent interest. So, basically, we'll be paying two percent interest but on our bond historically, and hopefully making seven to nine percent with that money going forward. It's not guaranteed, a lot of this hinges on the stock market and bond, a lot of it, but in a nutshell, that's my logic for it. And all the experts that I've talked to say, yeah, it'll be fiscally responsible for us to do that. I, and for us to float a bond, to do that, we have to have our bond guy. Bill Brochi, his company Hutchinson Shaki Burley. We used him for the colony bond, and he did very well for us, and I have to say, his rates were probably half of the old bond council that the township used to use Stotter out of Ann Arbor. Bill's kind of, kind of works. You know, it's a low overhead company, let's put it that way. And this is a letter, our engagement, to retain him for, to do this, this bond, bonding going forward. If we didn't have him, we'd probably have to, probably end up with Stotter who would be more money to do it, so. And as far as, you know, the specifics of the bond and the amount with MERS and everything else, you know, these are rough numbers, that will come later after they do their due diligence and work on it. So, basically, they've been selling bonds right now, it all depends on the market and the day, but a company, or a township with our bond rating, which is the best you can get, it's been like a little over two percent and lower than two and a quarter.
So are we looking to approve this bond funding, or are we looking to?
Just to retain.
Approve retention.
Retention of him to do it.
To do some advisement?
Right.
Okay.
And like I say, he doesn't get paid until we float the bond, but he doesn't want to do all the work upfront without a promise that, you know, if you're going to pull the string, I want to, you know, get taken care of. And it does have a, either party can get out of it with written termination of either party upon written notice to the other party, so it's not, it's non-binding, basically.
We don't necessarily have to bond for all these divisions, we can, I mean, some of them we can take care of.
Right, and we can work out the details of the actual bond, you know, in the next few months.
I mean, the DPW after two thousand and ten is already ninety-five percent funded.
Are you looking at the open or closed, or both, you got to put both of them together?
There is a closed one.
Yeah, there is.
Two thousand and ten.
There's this one for DPW.
Yeah, that's the closed.
Yeah.
That's before two thousand and ten, like after two thousand and ten, there's only one person in there and.
Oh, yeah.
The maximum unfunded liability is in the negative.
Right.
And they would charge us thirty thousand dollars to bond it, so we don't need to do that.
Well, it would be one bond. To do the whole township and they divvy it up between the groups. And like I say, we're not voting on doing the bond, we're just voting on retaining our consultant to advise us if it makes sense for us to do it going forward.
I'll make a motion to retain Hutchinson Shaki Burley.
Yep.
For our MERS bonding investigation.
Support.
Okay, motion and support, any more discussion? Bill's been here a couple times, when we were doing the, looking at doing a bond for the fire trucks, and then also he was here once or twice for the colony water bond, where, you know, we came up with, we can prepay it, you get out early if a lot of people prepay, and that saves us a lot of money. I mean, he's a sharp guy, so.
He's going to act as our consultant, bond consultant.
Right.
Much like OHM is doing for sewer intercepts.
Exactly.
Right, they're going to test the waters, they're going to check it out, they're going to scope it, they're going to make some recommendations.
Yep.
You got support?
Yeah, we have motion and support. Any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Artie Brison?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes? Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Chris O'Regan?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. And another thing too, which this, a bond does, and we'll get into it later. We'll know for budgetary reasons exactly what we, we need to pay what's expected for each group and everything, and it makes a lot easier. With MERS how it is now, it all depends on how the stock market did the last five years and with their projections, and it's a roller coaster. And it's impossible.
Mainly going up.
What?
Mainly always going up.
Mainly going up, exactly. So this will make that part very, a lot easier, and they say you can only bond up to ninety-five percent because, you know, if you bond a hundred, chances are they'll end up owing us money.
Yep.
And you're paying interest on, on something that you shouldn't be, some people bond at ninety percent. But, and still, that's not a guarantee, because if the stock market tanks, that ninety-five percent can drop down to ninety for a few years, and it will, when it goes back up, you know, it jumps around like a, like a Mexican jumping bean, so. But historically, like I say, looking back, it makes sense to do over the last fifty years, so. Alright, enough said. Board member comments, Cindy?
I don't have anything, other than everybody take your vitamin C.
Who am I?
We're all sounding a little bit scratchy all the time.
I am right now, I need water.
No, I have one thing I'd like to say is, thank you to the administrative department for all their hard work that they do with the auditors, the health insurance, the unions, the MERS bonding, the health renewal. They spend a lot of time every day, you know, doing something to keep us, our township afloat financially, and they, I think they need to, say, I have a big thank you for them.
Thank you. Sandy?
Well, congratulations to our new hires this evening, I look forward to seeing you represent Clay Township as well as you represented yourselves tonight. And everybody have a happy and safe Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Welcome to Clay Township Fire Department, Mr. Lucas and Mr. Jeffries. I got a couple things to go over, one, Starville Road project. I almost got a ticket today because my truck was so dirty. I am so tired of dirt roads.
And I got an update, actually, I should have said it. I was, I've asked the road commission when it's going to be done, they just said they were hoping it'd be done sooner, but there was complications and probably not till spring, so you're going to have a dirty road truck for a while. No.
So it's spring?
Yeah. Yep, I didn't get into what the complications are, but, yeah.
Wow.
I must be missing something and never go that way, what's actually closed?
Well, it's not in Clay, it's Starville Road north of Clay.
Oh, north of?
Yeah.
There's no way to get out of town that way without getting a dirty vehicle.
Yeah, because you got to take the dirt part tomorrow or.
That sucks. Number two.
Hey, let's make your day better.
It is time to replace your smoke detector batteries.
Oh, that was so last meeting.
Oh, you guys got that?
That was so last meeting with the time change.
Okay, call Artie, he's really good at it.
No, call the Red Cross, they'll come and do it.
Lastly, number three, I wanted to just piggyback on something you said about the high water.
Yep.
If you're considering sandbag and you're considering burns, right, when the ground freezes this winter, it's going to be a great time to do that.
Exactly.
You're going to be able to get trucks, you're going to be able to get equipment on your yard, you're going to be able to move and do things with machines that you can't do in the springtime, when it's a pit, so I just wanted to piggyback on that and express that luck favors the prepared.
Yep.
That's all.
Winter tax bills. Next week, so you should start to see them, I'm just answering a question that we get a call about at least daily. You should start to see them the first week of December. And then also, all of our Goodfellows things that we have going on at the township offices, we have a warming tree set up, which is taking donations of new hats, gloves, scarves, and socks, and that's up and running, so drop those off whenever. We have a toy box for babies through fifteen, unwrapped toys, books, board games, gift cards, anything like that. We have a roundup boot, so if your water bill is a hundred and seventy-three dollars and fifty cents, and you bring in a hundred and seventy-four dollars or a hundred and eighty dollars, you can throw that rounded up change into our boot, and so far, we have collected, I think it's getting close to a hundred dollars, which I think is fantastic. Two weeks, actually, because we started it just before the last meeting, I think. And then the paper sale is December seventh, the Goodfellow paper sale, and I think we're going to have those at the counter for sale as well. And then there's a bowling fundraiser that benefits Goodfellows, and that is December eighth, and it begins at noon. So support where you can.
Yep, and we're going to keep that rounded up for the Goodfellows going on all the time, we just saw it a couple, three weeks ago, and it's been popular, so. Good job, Chrissy. Next meeting, we'll have a report from our auditors, and we did a quick review of the draft, and I thought it came out pretty darn good, on all our departments, actually, and I want to give kudos to Cindy and Chrissy and all our department heads, because, you know, we worked hard, and especially this year, we, the general budget, we spent a lot of money on flooding, sandbags and stuff. And I think the rough numbers are, we're still putting about two hundred and thirty, or it was well over two hundred thousand dollars back in our general fund, which is, oh, I'm just around thirteen, fourteen percent, which is pretty darn good. So, but he'll be here at our next meeting, and you're right, the high water, I, you know, it's been really frustrating for me because I'm doing stuff, seems like every other day, and it was right before. other day, and it was right before, it was half hour before this meeting, I'm talking to our state senator about, you know, why aren't people getting excited in Lansing, and even at the colony level? And, you know, we need to be, we have these advanced measures we should be doing yesterday, and Dan Lowers and I, you know, like I said, we were talking granular, very granular stuff, a lot of detail, on maybe this DNR emergency authority and how to, to, you know, you don't want, want them to give them too much power, but, but, you know, we need some, some ability to adapt and be proactive instead of reactive. And that's what we've been pounding the table for, and it's, I don't understand why it's so hard for government to be proactive, especially when, okay, it's not going to be better, it probably is going to be worse. We don't know how, how, how much worse, but, you know, we need to be prepared. Like I told them about that berm behind the fire station and everything, okay, we got a quote, we put it up the hill to the state and the county, and Sid, Sid, and I goes, if I don't hear of anything, we're going to do it ourselves, you know, I'll have someone do it. If we're in this on our own, fine, let us know. You know, we put, we put in a request August twelfth, and we don't get it answered till just, just recently. Well, if you knew you weren't going to request it and you're afraid to tell us, you know, suck it up and tell us, I want to know if we're in this by ourselves, you know, we can plan for it better, but if not, you're going to help us, let's get some help. Oh, one thing I did want to mention, we had a meeting at, with a wastewater treatment plant and things going forward, we got talking about, you know, they had issues there, and they have a need for a large portable pump occasionally. And we were talking with Ira, Algnack, and Clay ourselves, and we wanted, they wanted to talk about maybe getting an eight-inch pump, and if they weren't using it there, one of us could use it, it's on the trailer and everything, so we voted, go ahead and get it, and, which they ordered it, and so, like, you know, for that, there might be a lift station that's flooded out or not working, boom, we can run over there, pump it out in an hour, and it should last twelve hours or so after that. And so that eight-inch pump, I mean, it pumps a lot of water, would be available, first priority is the wastewater treatment system, but after that, you know, we can use it and share, share on it, too, so, and that's, you know, God forbid, we may need that thing, so.
Being proactive.
Yeah, we're trying, because I know whose phone rings when everyone's complaining about a boat from Macomb County going by and throwing a wave and, and water coming up through those marsh and flooding my garage out and everything, and...
That'd be yours.
Yeah. Yeah. So, so we're trying.
All of us calling you. Artie, what are you going to do?
Yeah, what are you going to do? What are you going to do? So. When's our next meeting? December second?
December second.
Hope everyone has a good Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Motion adjourned?
Yep.
Support.
Thanks for coming, everybody.